Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The April 16, 2018 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. You're invited to stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith will lead the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek your first in all we do together. We give you our business, our suppliers, our customers, and our workforce. May we always be mindful of their service. We confess that we are nothing without you, and our trust is in you completely. Amen.
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 Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, would you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. As a preliminary statement, the administration is withdrawing Bill Number 2218. And we will now open up the invitation to the audience. We invite members of the audience who have signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject that is not included on the printed agenda, with remarks limited to two minutes. And I don't see that we have anybody signed up. Ms. Johnson? If anybody else wants to participate in this, please come forward right now, because we'll fill up these chairs if anybody's interested, and if not, this will be the end of the invitation to the audience. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I thought twice about talking to you all about this tonight, but because of the concern about racial divisions and unrest and so forth, and the commemoration of Martin Luther King, someone raised a question about, well, how serious is it really that someone makes a noose? It's just a piece of rope. Why would that terrorize anyone? And so I said, well, as old people, have some other stories to tell. There was a pastor in Birmingham, Alabama, named Fred Shuttleworth. And he was a leader in helping people try to get into the school system, desegregating buses and so forth. And there was an innocent man with his wife walking down the street named Judge Aaron. And meanwhile, in the Ku Klux Klan, there was an election coming up. And this one man wanted to be the big leader, and he wanted to win the election. And so, of course, they had to demonstrate that they were really bad, and they were really the kind of people that should be elected. So they captured this black man, took him to a remote area, confined him, beat him up really badly. But they had purchased razors, and they cut off his scrotum. And in order to inflict the maximum amount of pain, they poured turpentine on the open wound. They gathered him up, loaded him into the back of their car, drove down the road and dumped him, and got away, taking, of course, taking the scrotum with them, because this was the treasure and proof of their actions. Remarkably, someone rescued this man. He survived this awful ordeal. Normally, this is before the days -- well, anyway, he survived. And unlike the normal events in the South, they actually prosecuted four of the perpetrators. But there were separate trials. And in each case, one of the ordeals of the trial was that clear the courtroom of the women, and this poor man had to display his wounds to the jury members. The juries were really effective. They convicted the men, and they were sentenced to 20 years, which was the maximum penalty.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
So the point is that the fear of Klan activity is deep, and it's profound.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We will now close the invitation to the audience. We have a presentation, the annual audit presentation. Miss -- Madam Auditor? I take it you'll introduce the panel?
Yes. They have their reports, right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Chairman Peruca, and members of the county council. I'm Jody Dickinson, the county auditor. Tonight, we have a representative here from Clifton-Larsen Allen, the county's external auditors, to present the fiscal year 2017 results of their audit of the county's financial statements and the results of the single audit of federal grant expenditures. We have provided a package to each of you that includes, one, the required communications letter to the governing board, a report on internal controls, the management letter, the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30, 2017, and the single audit of the county's federal grant expenditures for fiscal year ended 2017. Keith Novak, to my left, the engagement principal, is here to present these to you and answer any questions you have about the audit and the related reports. Also here, from the Office of Finance, is Karen McQuade, the controller, Lorraine Tony, our assistant controller, and Michael Beard. They will answer any specific questions related to the financial statements or any other matter noted in the audit reports and related letters. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Novak.
Good evening. As Jody mentioned, my name is Keith Novak. I'm a principal at Clifton-Larsen Allen. I have the great responsibility of going over the audit, which hopefully will not be overly exciting. First, I'd like to go over what we did in our scope of services. In addition to auditing the financial statements of the county, we also provide an audit of the federal grants, also known as the single audit, as well as an audit of the 911 program and an audit of the county's OPEB trust. The financial statements of the county include many other entities, and we audit a number of those entities, including Anarundel Community College, Anarundel Board of Education, and Anarundel Economic Development Corp. So those are other entities that are for audits. However, the individual teams that perform the audits of those engagements are different than the team that performs the county audit. What I'd like to do now is go over the governance letter, then spend a brief few moments on the financial statements, as well as the government audit standards letter, the management letter, and then finally, the single audit. And I believe you have copies of all these. I will try to summarize this as best I can. With regard to the governance letter, whenever we meet with a group like this, there are certain communications that were required to make, and that's what's in this letter. The accounting policies that are followed by the county are described in Note 1 to the financial statements. During the year this year, the county adopted three new standards. They were GASBY Number 73, which was just in a cleanup standard, really didn't have any impact on the county's statements; GASBY Statement Number 74, which had to do with employee -- sorry, plan accounting for the other post-employment benefit plan; and then GASBY Number 77, and GASBY being the Government Accounting Standards Board, Number 77 on tax abatement disclosures. None of these had any real impact on the financial statements of the county. In the audit of the county's financial statements and in the numbers, there are certain estimates that have to be made. Our job in looking at the estimates is to determine whether they were based on sound logic or in accordance with what industry standards have with regard to them. And then also, if specialists are used, we have to evaluate the specialists from a standpoint of their capabilities. Among the estimates are the depreciable lives of capital assets, the liability for post-closure landfill costs, incurred but not reported liabilities for your self-insurance, the estimate of the pension liability and the other post-employment benefit liability, and then the income tax receivable and allowance therefor. In some of these cases, such as the IBNR and the pension in OPEB, there are external actuaries used in those cases. We look at the things that the actuaries are basing their estimates on, and in some cases, we have our own actuaries look at the reports to make sure they're in accordance with standards. With regard to landfill, a lot of that estimate is based upon engineering estimates as to how full the landfill is. We didn't encounter any difficulties in performing the audit this year. As far as uncorrected misstatements, there were no uncorrected misstatements that we were aware of. There was one misstatement that was corrected during the year, and it had to do with accounts receivable and revenue in the Water and Wastewater Debt Service Fund. What happened was there was a receipt that came in. The receivable balance was reduced for the receipt. However, there was never any receivables set up for this particular item to begin with. And so there were adjustments made. We had no disagreements with management on any accounting issues. At the end of the audit, we asked management to provide us a letter of representations, which basically says that you provided us everything, you responded to all of our inquiries, and you answered everything truthfully. And we had no problem getting that letter, and it's attached to our governance letter dated December 20, 2017. To our knowledge, management did not consult with any other accountants on accounting or any audit matters. We didn't discuss any significant matters with management prior to our engagement, other than things that would have happened in the normal course of business, such as upcoming GASBY pronouncements, et cetera. We have provided a separate management letter, which communicates internal control matters. Your financial statements are what we call group financial statements, meaning that it's more than just one entity that's involved in the statements, as I mentioned earlier. And as such, we look at the group and take responsibility for the group as a whole. We had no instances where we had to question the quality of any of the component auditors. There were no restrictions on our access for information. And then lastly, in the financial statements, there is a lot of information, some of which we give an opinion on, some of which we don't give an opinion on, and some of which we give a limited opinion on, such as required supplemental information. We don't give an opinion on that, but we do read it to make sure that there's no inconsistency. With regard to supplemental information, we give an "in relation to" opinion, meaning that we're not auditing every number there, but we audited the source documents that made up those numbers. And then lastly, there are certain bits of information, such as statistical schedules and introductory schedules, organization charts, and things like that, for which we do not perform any audit procedures whatsoever or give an opinion on them. But again, we read them to make sure that there's no inconsistencies with the main financial statements. With regard to the financial statements, the county issues what's called a CAFR, which is a comprehensive annual financial report. A CAFR is much more comprehensive than just financial statements. A CAFR includes an introductory section, the management discussion and analysis, financial statements, the notes to the financial statements, the required supplemental information, supplemental information, and statistical information. If you were to issue anything other than a CAFR, you would not need the introductory section or the statistical information. However, by issuing a CAFR, it allows you to qualify for an award by the GFOA. It's an award of excellence. Also, the introductory section and the statistical sections provide meaningful information for use in making management decisions and to give you a very good trend analysis. The CAFR is about 228 pages long, so it's a really nice document to read if you're having trouble sleeping. But the only thing in there that's truly mine and my firm's is the audit opinion on pages nine through 11. Everything else in here is the representation of management. The audit was performed in accordance with government audit standards, as well as generally accepted audit standards. Government audit standards is a higher level of standard and requires certain things, such as specialized education. We did issue an unmodified or clean opinion once again this year, which is the highest level of opinion that can be obtained by an audity. And that's really all I wanted to go over on the financial statements themselves. Management is here and could probably answer any pointed questions you may have on the statements or provide other information that you may have. With regard to the government audit standards letter, that's a letter that we have to issue regarding internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. We are not allowed to issue a letter saying everything is fine. The best we can do is issue a letter saying there were no material weaknesses, which we have issued. In addition, we did not note any instances of noncompliance with laws or regulations. The governance letter is about the cleanest letter that you can get with regard to that letter. We did, however, have a number of management letter comments, three in total. And just briefly to go over them, the one had to do with the adjusting journal entry that I alluded to earlier, and the controls surrounding monitoring that data. One had to do with collateralization of a repurchase agreement, which required 102% collateralization. You read 101.9.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before you move forward to the second one, I just had a question on the first one, if you don't mind. Sorry to interrupt. I just figured it'd be better, easier to deal with it as we go. I know, for those of us who have been on this council for two terms, we've continued to see this issue with the Department of Public Works. And I read the note, basically stating that this -- they have some sort of process in place that should be in place by the end of the fiscal. But are you aware, or did they explain to you what that process was or what the software was they were working on? And do you feel like it's sufficient to prevent a $2.2 million error again?
Well, there have been a number of issues over the years with the Department of Public Works. This is not consistent with some of the other issues. While it is a financial issue, it's not really similar to what we've run into in the past.
The issues that I recall were related to spreadsheets.
Right.
Were using massive spreadsheets to do calculations instead of some sort of customized software that accommodates what we're -- the way we process things.
Correct.
And so the fear and concern was that there were lines deleted accidentally or whatever that impact financials. And so you're saying that the error that you describe in this monitoring of financial data isn't related to that concern?
Not that concern, no. This was a human error, where somebody made an entry not realizing that there was no receivable prior to that entry being made.
And then you also mentioned in the letter that you feel like that there's -- or that management responded by saying there's an additional level of review in place, and you feel like that review will prevent that from happening again?
It should prevent it from happening again, yes.
Okay. Maybe Ms. McQuade or someone who can address the spreadsheet issue in this new software or fix or solution that they've proposed? I was just curious where -- I know every year we've asked about it, so every year it's come up, as I recall.
I talked to DPW, and they said that they're in the testing phase, and they're going to run it parallel with the other system. It seems to be working well, and they hope to have it online by the end of this fiscal year.
And that would prevent any of the need for massive spreadsheets going forward in the future?
That's the goal.
That's awesome.
It's definitely the goal.
Very good news. Thank you very much.
The only thing I will add to that is, in any system, the level of supervisory review and independent review is critical to make it work well. You can automate a system and have the best automated system in the world, but if you don't have individuals reviewing what's going on from an independent standpoint of the input, then you can very easily have things go off the rails pretty quickly.
But it's substantially better than the system we were operating with under before.
It would be.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And then you had already moved sort of into the second issue, which is the collateralization of repurchase agreements.
Right.
And is our threshold that's required, is 102%, is -- what have we been previously? Forgive me for not remembering. Is it hovered right around that mark, or has it been consistently over that?
You know, off the top of my head...
This doesn't seem like a big issue to me, but I just...
You know, I hated having to write it.
Right, okay.
Okay, 101.9 is like...
Yeah, exactly.
But it's one of those sayings. It said we were supposed to be at 102, we were at 101.9. And quite frankly, this type of an issue is not that unusual, because the banks are constantly trying to guess the market to make sure that they have enough collateral set aside. And quite frankly, if you get a large deposit that goes into the bank on a given day, the bank may not have time to react. So this is not an unusual situation.
Yeah, it did strike me as that.
It's unusual for Anarundel County.
Right.
But it's not unusual in the industry.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then the last comment we had had to do with information technology. And we noted that there were three instances of terminated employees who were not timely removed from the system. Now, those employees did not have access to the system, because in order to have access, they'd have to be at a computer that was linked into the network. The concern that we have anytime we see a situation like this is if someone else who has access to the system was to go in under one of these usernames if they knew they were out there and dormant. And that's the concern there. Now, just to give you an idea of where we've come from in the past, we had three comments that were totally resolved in the past year, and we have six comments that are still in process, one from 2009, one from 2012, and four from 2016. The ones from '09 and 2012, if memory serves me correctly, one has to do with reforestation. And it's been an issue for a number of years, only because we don't have -- manpower hasn't been there to go back and do what needed to be done. However, the county is making progress on the prior year comments. And then the last area that I wanted to go over was the single audit. The single audit is an audit of your federal expenditures. During the year, the county received approximately $25.6 million in federal expenditures in fiscal 2017. When we do the single audit, there are certain thresholds and certain targets that have to be met. One of those has to do with whether the county is considered a low-risk audity or an "other-than-low-risk" audity. And because of material weakness in financial statement reporting in 2016 related to construction costs, the county is not considered a low-risk audity. What does that mean? That means that the audit has to cover 40% of the total expenditures, as opposed to 20% of the total expenditures. In other words, twice as much. During the year, we tested nine programs, which covered approximately 45.3% of grant expenditures. Again, 40% was required. We issued an unmodified opinion on the federal grant awards. However, we did have three findings. The one had to do with sub-recipient monitoring. When the county gets money and then gives it to another organization to carry out its goals, and is considered -- that organization's considered a sub-recipient, there are certain things the county must do in monitoring that money to make sure the sub-recipient is doing what they should be doing. And we had an issue with one program on that. With regard to allowable costs, which is one of the things that we test, in the aging cluster, we had difficulty obtaining, and actually, we were unable to obtain documentation for one of 18 expenditures that were tested in that area. And then lastly, the schedule of expenditures of financial awards, which is basically a list of what makes up that $25.6 million, we had an issue with that changing at the last minute. And there were three programs that were not properly recorded or not accurately recorded, which, quite frankly, ended up requiring us to test one more program at the very end because we weren't reaching our 40% threshold at that point in time. Those findings are not what I would consider earth-shattering findings, but they are reported within the single audit. With that said, that is basically what we've done and what our results of our audit were.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you. Mr. Novak, I want to go back to the OIT information technology finding that you had. Now, it said that you tested the network. Now, did you take a random sample? Can you be more specific about what the audit included?
Yeah. When we do testing of the IT environment, we actually bring in IT auditors. That's all they do. They're individuals who, in some cases, are CISA-certified and are very, very well-equipped to look at large systems. What they do is they look at both general controls and user controls, as well as application controls in some instances. With regard to the user controls and the general controls, they take samples of, for instance, terminated employees. I don't know what that sample size was in this case, but they would take a sample. That sample generally is going to be a sample out of the number of terminated employees that occurred during the year, as opposed to just grabbing a random sample of people and hoping we get some terminated folks. We also look at new hires in the onboarding process and how that occurs as well. So it's not a situation where we're just grabbing, you know, some samples and hoping that we get some individuals. We actually target specific populations.
Well, and one of the things I was looking at, again, maybe this is a question for Mr. Napolitano, who's not here. If we use single sign-on, I know we have a lot of applications throughout the county, but typically when you have a -- and I don't know what the enterprise system we have, but if you have single sign-on, if you remove someone's email account, it takes their access away from everything. Now, again, I don't know if that's something that we could have a follow-up, if we could check on that and see why, but that would solve a lot of the issues. And I know that we obviously use Gmail, so I don't know how that's connected to these other applications, but it's something to certainly consider in the industry that I work in. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Anything else?
No, I think we're finished.
Mr. Novak, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it very much. Thank you for your work, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. And the new audit starts tomorrow.
Is there any item any councilman would like to place on the agenda? I may have a motion that the partial reading of any bill resolution of minutes constitutes the reading of the whole.
Somewhere, Mr. Chack.
Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of April 2, 2018.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Michael Peruca at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Walker, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Troops 382 and 995 from Arnold.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 2, 2018?
Somewhere, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. The minutes of April 2, 2018 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 3118, An Ordinance Concerning Parking Rates, Whitmore Garage. Bill Number 3218, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Correction of Zoning Violations Notice. Bill 3318, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Classified Employees, Miscellaneous Leave. Bill Number 3418, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Cosmetic Facial Hair Salons. Bill Number 3518, An Ordinance Concerning Board of Appeals and Administrative Hearings, Restrictions, Residential Rezonings. Bill Number 3618, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Commercial Districts, Farm, Equipment Sales, and Service Facilities.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read the title of the resolution to be introduced this evening?
Resolution Number 1018, Resolution Declaring Bullying to be a Public Nuisance in Anorunde County and Requesting Information from the Department of Health as to Implementation of a Nuisance Prevention Plan for Bullying in the County.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 1018 out of order?
Some more, Mr. Chacke.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, excuse me.
Do we, is anyone here from the Department of Health or the Board of Ed? Mr. Marzick?
Aye.
Thank you.
Where were we? Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
I'm sorry, sir.
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Resolution 1018 is defeated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of Bill Number 1718 as amended?
Chair?
Mr. What, three?
Bill Number 1718, An Ordinance Concerning Administrative Zoning Reclassifications, Temporary Moratorium.
Pardon, Madam Secretary, perhaps it would be appropriate for me to just announce that Resolution 1018 will be heard in the normal course.
The next meeting.
Next, next session. I'm sorry, go, go ahead again. Please read the title of Bill 1718 as amended.
Bill Number 1718, An Ordinance Concerning Administrative Zoning Reclassifications, Temporary Moratorium.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, we have an amendment to offer at the appropriate time. This is our bill dealing with the moratorium on rezonings in the county.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I believe we have a sign-up.
We'll now open the public hearing, then. Remarks limited to two minutes. We have a, sign, sign up. Ms. Amy Leahy has signed up. Anybody else who would like to come down, please come down at this time.
I'm Amy Leahy, and I live in Severna Park, 712 Monmouth Avenue. I was actually going to testify in support of this, but now with the amendment that draws out the moratorium until much further down the road, I think that I'm just going to have no comment. I'm not really in support of the amendment. I would rather see the moratorium take place at the end of June, as it was first amended.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make any sense?
Yes.
It makes no sense, but it makes...
No, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there, if there's nobody else, we'll, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
If there's nobody else, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1718 as amended.
Bill Number 1718 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Administrative Zoning Reclassifications, Temporary Moratorium.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Okay.
No, we're not, we're not to the amendment yet, but...
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm going to announce it right now. Now, there is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment changes the expiration of the temporary administrative zoning reclassifications moratorium to the sooner of 90 days after the date a draft general development plan is submitted to the Planning Advisory Board, or the date legislation is introduced to adopt the new general development plan. But in any event, no later than July 1, 2020.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, the county Executive's Office. This amendment is the work of Mr. Trumbauer and Mr. Hager, meeting to discuss. As you remember, at the last meeting on this bill, we had a lengthy discussion about when the eight, end date of this would be. So what this does is this says that the moratorium ends 90 days after the Planning Advisory Board receives the general development plan, or the date the general development plan is introduced by the county council, which was actually what was in your original bill, Mr. Grasso, as far as the date to end the date of this. And the reason that also the, not later than July 1, 2020, was because what we had touched on last time, that the Office of Law suggested that we have a certain end date in there, just so that this is not an open-ended moratorium indefinitely. We would ask for your support of this amendment. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Mr. Trump.
So, thank you. For those of you who attended the work session, you may remember me trying to inarticulately describe this. I did a horrible job. So, so this does actually what Mr. Marzick said. And I will just add some insight. Mr. Hager and I did meet, and the, we went through a very, a couple different ways this could have played out, but we ended up on the 90 days after submission to the Planning Advisory Board, to give the Planning Advisory Board the chance to review the GDP and all of that, but to give a, to give a finality to that, so that, so that they wouldn't feel undue pressure in that scenario. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this. Again, it does not, it doesn't change the effective date of when the moratorium starts. So we did that at the last meeting. We settled on July 15th in a let's-make-a-deal session, you guys might remember. This is on the back end of when the moratorium ends, and it extends it further than what the bill did as introduced.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Mr. Grasso?
Uh, nevermind.
Oh, thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 1718 as amended will be heard on May 7, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1818 as amended.
Bill Number 1818 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Board of Appeals Variances, Odenton Town Center Zoning, Administrative Hearings, Special Exceptions.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to answer any questions the council has. You'll remember, this is the bill dealing with special exceptions, adding the processes for the consideration into the Board of Appeals, which is currently in the Office of Administrative Hearings requirements. And it also adds a requirement that is updated based on the Court of Appeals decision in the Schultz versus Pritz case. And it also requires a special exception be consistent with the comprehensive plan for a special exception to be granted. So we'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick. Are there any questions? All right, then we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 1818. I don't, there's no sign-up sheet, there's nobody's name on the sign-up sheet, so if, if anybody wants to testify on 1818, please come down now. Seeing the movement, we'll close the public hearing on Bill 1818 as amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1818 as amended.
Bill Number 1818 as amended, An Ordinance Concerning Board of Appeals Variances, Odenton Town Center Zoning, Administrative Hearings, Special Exceptions.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 1818 as amended.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1818 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1918 as amended.
Bill Number 1919 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Administrative Hearings, Notices, and Signs.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbauer?
It's administration bill. I'm just a co-sponsor.
Oh, excuse me.
So I can tell you how much I support it.
Okay, well, let me do that, Mr. Marzick. Mr. Walker?
I believe the Madam Secretary said 1919. Just want for the record, it was 1918.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, the county Executive's Office. This is the bill to add, or increase the distance from 175 feet to 300 feet for notification pending administrative hearings for rezonings. We will offer an amendment at the appropriate time.
Thank you, sir. Any others, any other discussion? We will therefore open up the public, did we already do the public hearing here? No, I'm sorry, we did not. We'll open up the public hearing.
[inaudible].
Miss Leahy is signed up again for 1918, please. Good evening again.
Good evening again. My apologies, I misread the amendment on that first one. So, on this one, on Bill 1918, my name is Amy Leahy, and I'm here tonight testifying in support of Bill 1918 on behalf of the Greater Severna Park Council. GSPC and others have been working with the Office of Planning and Zoning for several years to improve the notification process to property owners for impending development or zoning changes which affect the existing residence. We are pleased to see this bill before you that defines and clarifies the word "confront" in reference to lots or parcels adjoining the subject property. We see adding the definition as a positive, and that there would be no question about the word and its intent or application would be clear. It also conforms to the Natural Resources Article of the Maryland State Code, or COMAR, the definition for confront. We also support the increase of notification requirements from 175 feet to 300 feet, which would be changed in 18-16-201 applications portion and 18-16-203 notices and signs. The legal requirement for the county's Department of Public Works, according to staff at Traffic Engineering for notification of a new streetlight installation, is set at 200 feet, which is 25 feet more than that required to notify neighbors of a new development. We ask that you pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leahy. Thank you for your comments and for all your work. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this bill? Please come right now. Oh, come on, come on down, sir. And Ms. Johnson, good evening again.
Good evening. Julie Johnson, Field Office, 634 Annapolis, Maryland. I want, you know, I speak on my own behalf. I've been involved with some work in Herald Harbor, and a lot of us are really concerned about the excessive development on steep, you know, adjacent to steep slopes, with the constructions of homes where they request, you know, variances to the steep slopes and so on. These variance hearings typically go, go under the 175-foot notification area, and it's simply not sufficient. Years ago, there were 900 homes in Herald Harbor. This is no way to get the information out to the public, where these areas are being denuded. And Herald Harbor used to be densely forested with wonderful, beautiful old trees. Back in the 90s and the early 2000s, I used to come to you and complain about how intruders, you know, intruded on undeveloped lots, including, you know, some of mine, chopped down 125-year-old oak trees and other valuable timber, and cleared the area with the intent of subsequently developing it. So there are problems that are related to this with uncontrolled construction by what some of us call ruthless builders and developers. So this is a step in the right direction, but I really feel that further notification is really a minimum, because in an area with so many peninsulas, you know, if this event is happening, or if the change is happening down, you know, peninsula road, you know, you don't have through traffic, and no one ever knows about it. Or in the immortal words of the hearing officer, "There were a lot of deer who saw the sign, but not too many human beings." So you posted the sign and met the law, and so I have to find that you complied with the law. Now, he didn't care. I care. I think it's, it's not adequate.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
So this is better.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. Please tell us your name and address in two minutes.
Stephen Bradford, 528 Corbin Parkway, Rolling, Corbin Parkway, Rolling Hills, in Annapolis, Maryland. This is actually kind of a spontaneous adjunct at Bill 2418. So my concern regarding 1918 is that I feel the current required proximity notification of such developments of only 175 feet is an arbitrary distance, clearly intended actually to minimize public awareness. Notification should really be consistent upon the affected community in the surrounding area. For example, the COMAR associated with 2418 is 1,000 feet. I think notification should exceed the distance of a football thrown by an adult male. If we can't notify the surrounding area of these developments and changes with the lick of a stamp, I feel we've defeated our purpose in notifying the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Appreciate it very much. That will close the public hearing on Bill Number 1918 as amended. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1918 as amended.
Bill 1918 as amended, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Administrative Hearings, Notices, and Signs.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Mr. Swain, question for you on the, on this bill. This, this change in the notice, does it, does it also change standing? Okay, so it's just notification, it's not standing?
It's notification, correct.
Got it.
Standing is governed by its own set of rules.
That's what I figured. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Swain, this bill essentially changes the radius from 175 feet to 300 feet, correct?
A minimum, correct.
How far can you throw a football?
Probably not 300 feet, it's safe to say. Probably not 175 feet.
Well, but definitely not 300.
Unless it's downhill.
Downwind.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Swain.
Downhill, downwind.
He's got a good arm, too.
Thank you. Any, if there, any further discussion? I understand there's an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment clarifies that government entities and public service companies owning property do not need to be notified of applications for administrative planning or zoning relief filed by owners of nearby property.
Thank you. Motion to adopt?
Some more, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, this is a mistake that we made in drafting of our prior amendment on this. So this has the same intent of Amendment Number Two that the council adopted last time. This amendment exempts government property or public utility property from the second level of notification for this. So the example being used is that an adjoining or confronting government property or public utility property be notified, the second notification for those that are adjoining, the adjoining or confronting properties would not receive the notification. So hopefully this corrects that mistake that we had worked with the auditor on.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Auditor. Is any, any further discussion on that? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 1918 as amended will be heard on May 7, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2018 as amended.
Bill Number 2018 as amended, An Ordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, Fire Prevention Code, Fire Hydrants.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Grasso?
I'm done talking about this. Everybody knows how I feel about it.
Thank you very much.
That's a tough bill opening, I'm sure.
Mr. Marzick?
We support the bill, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is going very well. Any, any, any other discussion?
I'm done talking about this, Mr. Trump.
Well, good evening, Chief.
No more discussion.
Good evening. We will now open the public hearing. Anybody pushing to testify, please come down. Do we have a sign up for this? No, we don't have a sign up. All right, seeing the movement, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2018 as amended.
Bill Number 2018 as amended, An Ordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, Fire Prevention Code, Fire Hydrants.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 2018 as amended.
Seven of the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill Number 2018 is passed.
Thank you. Bill Number 2118. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2118.
Bill Number 2118: An Ordinance Concerning Zoning General Provisions, General Development Plan, Small Area Plans.
Thank you. Mr. Marzik.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the county executive's office. With me at the table, Phil Hager from Planning and Zoning and Greg Swain, Office of Law. As we discussed at the work session, Bill 2118 requires the upcoming general development plan and all future development, general development plans to provide for the preparation, development, and adoption of no less than seven small area plans. The total number of plans, their geographical composition, their content, and the schedule for completion will be determined by the GDP that is currently under development and as well as the future GDPs. This bill also provides for citizen-based participation, planning committees consisting of no fewer than nine individuals for each small area plan. Again, these details will be ironed out through the general development plan that comes before the council. The small area plans are intended to be consistent with the adopted general development plan and are expected to form a basis for the proposed recommendations of the next general development plan. We will offer an amendment at the appropriate time. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Tate?
I apologize, I forgot to ask this in the work session. In the bill, the entire list of plans that work serve as guides are being taken out in favor of some generic language. Is there a reason that the list of all the plans that have been used as guides are being taken out in favor of a generic language? And how would somebody, I guess the second part of that is how would somebody find out what all the current master plans, concept plans, preservation plans, and management plans adopted by the county council, if they're not listed in the code, either in the code or as an appendix or some, I mean, all of these were passed as bills, so I'm kind of wondering where they're going to be memorialized if they're not all here.
Yes, Greg Swain from the Office of Law. The intent behind that was to make sure and to verify that these code sections didn't have to be changed every time a master plan was updated. All of these master plans that are listed in this section are online at the Office of Planning and Zoning. The small area plans are still in existence, but after the 2009 GDP, the legal effect of the small area plans was superseded by the general development plan. So even though those plans exist, the land use plan in those plans and other components of those plans do not have any legal effect because they're superseded by the general development plan.
Yeah, and I'm aware of that. I remember when that change was placed in the code. I guess from the standpoint that if you open to this section and you can see where things came from and how they came into being in the county, and I don't know if this list is captured in the same way online. So that's what I'm wondering, I mean, it's, people can go to the code and open it up and say, okay, this came, then this came, then this came. And there's a legislative history there to all these plans that is being removed. So I don't know whether it's presented that way on the website or not. So wouldn't it be, I mean, I'm wondering if it's instructive to have it somewhere in the code so someone isn't going back to try to recreate where all these plans were and when they started.
Well, I think the intent is that all of the most current plans, like I said, are on the Office of Planning and Zoning's website and there's a link to them. They're pretty easy to find. As far as the way that these, all the various small area plans were listed, it seemed that it didn't make sense to list plans that were obsolete, and that's what we have. All these plans are obsolete because they no longer have any legal effect.
I guess. There's, I thought, it was my impression they're superseded by the general development plan, but that doesn't mean that they're not instructive. And I think it's where the general development plan has stated something that's different than the small area plan, than the general development plan would control, but that doesn't mean that everything that was done in the small area plans is negated. I mean, and that's all. That's sort of my point. Thank you.
Mr. Hager?
I would only offer that when this bill goes into effect and the small area plans are actually completed as part of this, obviously that will be a few years from now, there will be a whole new list of plans that would take the place of these, that would reflect the ones that actually have authority and would be instructive.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions? If not, then we will open up the public hearing. Ms. Leahy, she's signed up. If there's anybody else who would like to speak on Bill 2118, please come down now. Good evening, Mr. Spadaro. Ms. Leahy.
Good evening again. Amy Leahy, Severna Park, Maryland. And again, I'm testifying on behalf of the Greater Severna Park Council in support of Bill 2118. I'm a director at GSPC and I work specifically on development and land use concerns for the council. So we believe that the reason to have community involvement is in the general development plan process is for the protection of its constituents, its land, and other natural resources. Many years ago, citizens all throughout the county worked very hard and very long to develop the small area plans for their specific neighborhoods. Citizen input led to a, to creating a vision for what they wanted each of their communities to look like going forward. And of course, then that was changed in 2009. So unfortunately, under the previous administrations and under the previous officer of planning and zoning, the message stated was that the small area plans were merely a suggestion, quote-unquote, and the Planning and Zoning Office was not required to follow any of the citizen input. The small area plans were only to be used as a guide in the future development, according to the GDP that was passed in 2005. This showed a huge lack of respect for the citizens of our county. We applaud the current Director of Office of Planning and Zoning and the County Executive for seeing the need to seek and listen to citizen input in both the listening sessions that have been held by Office of Planning and Zoning and in this bill, which would require the small area plans to be considered in preparing the general development plan. We ask that you vote yes and pass Bill 2118. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leahy. Oh, Mr. Walker, please.
Thank you. Ms. Leahy, sorry to put you on the spot on this one, but there's, in your comments, it sounded like you support the bill. The Severna Park Council supports the bill and in particular, the small area planning process. But when we had our work session last week on this bill, my understanding is that the administration feels like they're wanting to push forward with the general development plan without small area plans included in this next general development plan. The bill mandates only that small area plans be in effect for future general development plans, not the one that's coming up that they're working on currently. So the only thing that would be incorporated, my understanding is the only thing that would be incorporated into the current GDP that they're working on is the citizen input from the listening sessions.
That's not my understanding. In discussions with Mr. Hager, I understood that we were going to be incorporating it now. I could be wrong. I could have misunderstood him.
Do you feel like that the Severna Park, Greater Severna Park Council would be opposed to removing small area plans or small area planning processes part of the upcoming GDP?
I'm not sure the timing of that. I know it took a long time to develop them before. Hopefully it wouldn't take this long to, but the upcoming one would be adopted in, what, 20?
Within the next year or two, yeah. Two years.
I'm not sure that that's not too early to be able to incorporate small area plans in it. I could be wrong.
My understanding is that they're saying that it is. That's why I was asking. I was clarifying.
I would still support the bill, and I think that's.
Even without the small area plans being required?
Well, being incorporated in this particular general development plan.
Correct, correct. They wouldn't be required for this general development plan.
If this is the case, I believe the Greater Severna Park Council would still prefer to have them even in the future, even if, but I think the small area plans have been very important. I think people have worked very hard. I think the fact that so many development issues are occurring now without input from small area plans that occurred previously, that were part of the previous, I mean, to have the Planning and Zoning Officer tell you that it's merely a suggestion after so much work went into it, I think is, to me, that just seems disingenuous.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Spadaro, good evening, sir.
Yes, this is Paul Spadaro, President of Magathie River Association. I'm here and I'm hearing things I don't really want to hear. The Magathie River Association kind of supports this particular bill. We've always believed in public input and small area plans is one of those things, as you sit in traffic along Ritchie Highway, College Parkway, Peninsula, you ask yourself, I didn't vote for this traffic. Where did this come from? So giving people the opportunity to at least go and say, this is what we want. We moved to this community because we like the environment, we like the schools, we like the trees, we like the level of quality of life. That's what we moved for. This is part of your public. Now, what I hear now that this administration is saying, oh, for this general development plan, let's not include the small area plans, let's not give the people of Anorundal County even the slightest little input on their future, even if it's only a short period of time, and let's kick the ball down the road to the next general development plan. Well, my friends sitting on the council, let me tell you, the people are going to be aware of this and come the upcoming elections, when they find out that this county council allowed their input to be negated, not only in the future, but in the upcoming election, they're going to say some things loud and clear that maybe some of you people that are sitting up here are going to realize that you're going down the wrong way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spadaro. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else for the public hearing? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2118.
Bill Number 2118: An Ordinance Concerning Zoning General Provisions, General Development Plan, Small Area Plans.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr., I understand there is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One: This amendment clarifies that the requirements for small area plans applies to future general development plans adopted after the effect of Bill Number 2118.
Thank you. Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With your indulgence, it would be okay if Mr. Hager responded to Mr. Walker's comments? We discussed this, I know at the work session, or we can do it after the amendment, however you prefer.
Well, actually, I think it would be helpful to respond to, not necessarily Mr. Walker's comment, but what was, what was said by the public. If you want to address that, I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay, then we'll come back to the amendment, if that's okay?
Very good. Happy to do that. For the record, Phil Hager, Planning and Zoning Officer. It's vitally important that we understand what has occurred and what is now moving forward in the form of this particular piece of legislation. A decision was made in 2007 to abandon the small area plans. That decision was codified in 2009 by the then-members of the council. That was the last nail in the coffin for small area plans. After that, they've been virtually rendered, not even really advisory, but they've certainly been neutered. The administration believes that small area planning is important. One thing above all else was made very clear over the last six or seven months of public outreach sessions as part of the development and as part of the first phase of public outreach for the general development plan. And that is that people are frustrated by all the work that went into the small area plans in the early 2000s, the amount of resources that were expended by the county and by the public in the development of those plans, and now to have them rendered useless is frustrating to them. And how can we prevent that from happening again? This bill seeks to do that by making it mandatory that we engage in small area planning and that small area planning be part of not only the future plans for the county, but also future general development plans. And in an effort to make sure that the, all the hard work that the public performed as part of the development of those old plans, the 16 small area plans that have already been developed, the executive has directed me and my staff to resuscitate those plans, to go back to those plans, to identify recommendations that still have validity, that have not been implemented, and to present those to the CAC when that CAC is formed in the form of a benchmark for moving forward. So that's, we ultimately have the opportunity to make the fullest possible use. In spite of the fact that somebody made, I would argue, erroneous decisions in the past, this will prevent that from happening again and make, will make the fullest possible use of those resources that we have in front of us.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Just to clarify, too, CAC Citizens Advisory Committee on the General Development Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hager, thank you for your clarifications, but, so now I'm a little bit confused because I heard you say the plans were abandoned in 2009, and I mean, obviously, that was before any of us were in our current positions. We, some of us assumed office in 2010, others 2014, I think. But yet, the references to those plans as a guide are still in the code, and this bill before us now is proposing to strike those references. So I'm having, I'm having a hard time reconciling what you just said. And I'm probably misunderstanding, but can you help me?
I'll be happy to try, Mr. Trumbauer.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the difficulties is that in 97, when the, when the small area plans were laid out in that general development plan, so what, the sequence is, the general development plan comes first, small area plans follow, and then become part of, and then, and then it becomes a symbiotic relationship from there on, but the order remains unchanged. In 97, the plan was laid out for how we were going to do the 16 small area plans. The decision was made during the development of that general development plan that there would be 16 plans, and that they became the named plans that you referenced in your question and was discussed earlier. Because we don't want to tie the hands of the people who are drafting the general development plan and the Citizens Advisory Committee who are going to be providing that critical advisory support, we don't want to pre-subscribe what the, what the composition of those plans are going to be, how many of them there are, et cetera. So if we just wanted to use the old 16 plans, there would probably be less need to remove them, but I think it's going to be particularly confusing in the future if we have seven plans, if we have eight plans, if we have 27 small area plans, however many there are, to have, to have these old plans listed that no longer are valid, no longer hold sway, and then to have a whole nother setup with, with different names, of course. So it just, it clears up the fact that these plans are no longer, are no longer valid because when people look at these things, and I'm always, I'm always, people are always amazed to find out that these small area plans are no longer binding.
Well, I mean, it says right in the code that they'll be used as a guide.
As a guide.
And I mean, I'll say, when, so I was on the council when we did comprehensive rezoning, and I utilized the small area plans as a guide during that time, you know, even though we're not bound to them. And so I guess, I guess my question to you would be, wouldn't it make some degree of sense to not strike the reference to them as a guide until a such point as the new ones are introduced, right? Because that, because essentially, we're creating a vacuum where there's no reference to the previous documents, but we don't have the new ones. So for some time, there's nothing.
I think that decision was, was made in 2009.
Yes, but, but it's still in, but it's still in the code because there's brackets around this bill. Am I wrong, Ms. Tate? Right now.
No, you're not wrong. They're taking them out as, as.
As guidance. I'm, I'm not just.
Right, it's just, it's just a list of current plans, concept. Right, it's just a list of current plans, concept plans.
Yeah.
I mean, the general development plan is one plan to rule them all, doesn't negate the advisory value of the small area plans. Doesn't.
Right.
I mean, as you said, there's still guides, as long as they're in the code, they're guides. But it's true that the general development plan supersedes--
Yeah.
--for the areas where they speak to the plan.
I'm not questioning that.
Mr. Trumbauer, I think I can answer. If you look at the language that we've put into the bill, all current master plans, concept plans, preservation plans, and management plans adopted by the council are considered when you're doing a general development plan. So that's requiring them to be considered.
Understood. And so in that language, I have circled the word "current," because my question is, would the previous small area plans be captured under that language? Because are they current? I mean, I think the answer is no, and so therefore, they would not be considered under your two, your-- Mr. Swain wants to say something.
Yes.
I know that look.
They are still the current small area plan until they're superseded by a new plan.
Okay.
So the intent of leading the list of individuals' small area plans listed was not to negate or throw out the small area plans.
Okay.
They still have the same effect that they have now. They're just not listed individually because of the change.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay. So just can I have all three of you guys agree that this language online, I think 38 on page three, "all current master plans, concept plans, et cetera," that retains your office's ability, Mr. Hager, to use the most recent small area plans as guidance documents?
It does, and we intend to.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, good. That was a productive conversation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I think that's what we've been saying since the work session, is that we're, the county executive has instructed Mr. Hager to look at these small area plans and try to pull out, you know, the information that we can still utilize when we're doing a general development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Mr. Smith.
I know at the work session, we had talked about with this current GDP that there were going to be potentially five small area plans implemented. Was that a correct statement?
A minimum of seven.
Minimum of seven? Do we know which areas those seven are at the moment?
No, they'll be identified through the general development plan. So when the general development plan comes to the council, the council will draft or will amend legislation to specify what the small area plans are.
So the minimum doesn't mean that it can't be 16 again? Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Grasso.
Mr. Chairman. Yep. In my continuing efforts over here, of course, I'm being texted all kinds of stuff and questions to ask you. So I'm going to throw this out here. It says, "Who's going to be on the advisory committee to the GDP process? Would you consider putting a rep from each small area? Otherwise, how will the non-binding SAPS be heard?" So basically, you heard what I said, right?
I did. There's a press release going out shortly announcing that the information is going to be on our website with the application for members of, members to self-nominate or to nominate another person with their consent, I hope, to serve on the Citizens Advisory Council for this GDP. Current says there's going to be a minimum of 13 members sitting on that. Part of that has to do with being a manageable number, part of it has to do with trying to ensure that we have complete diversity on that committee and that we have the interest represented from around, from around the county that we want to see, that everyone is going to want to see. So if we were to, if we were to have representatives, we could have, we could potentially have 16 representatives. But right now, we're specifying that we're going to have a minimum of 13.
So, Mr. Grasso, if I can add, the, under Bill 2118, the small area planning committees are, have to be no less than nine citizens from that small area. So in the GDP, it can describe additional requirements, et cetera, but this is just setting that minimum requirement.
So the bottom line is, they're going to take one person from each one of those plans, is what he's asking to do that?
Nine, nine from each small area.
Got it. Okay.
Mr. Grasso, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Last question, just so the public hears this as well. We brought it up as far as the members of the, was it seven members, no less than seven members, or nine members?
No fewer than nine.
No fewer than nine members. And I'll state it again, I am requesting that, certainly in the areas that are in District One, that we get to appoint someone to those committees. And so I want to put that out there. I know that you all were not opposed to it at the work session.
Right.
But I want to state clearly that I definitely want to be able to appoint someone to that, those commissions, so.
Understood. And we are very supportive of that. The council has input into that, and obviously, when the bill comes to the council, the council will lay out the specifications for those small area plans and the committees.
Okay.
On the amendment.
Just on the amendment.
Okay, that, that comprised our discussion before the amendment. Now we're going to talk about the amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
I'll read it in again.
Thanks.
This Amendment Number One, this amendment clarifies that the requirement for small area plans applies to future general development plans adopted after the effective date of Bill 2118.
Motion to adopt.
It's already been done.
We've already done that. All right.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, this, what we're trying to do, and I think this is to Mr. Trumbauer's point, is to try to really create a circle here of the, when a general development plan is considered, the plan that Mr. Hager and his team are working on now, that will include small area plans, and all future GDPs will also have small area plans, so it will continue to go forward in the future.
Okay. Any other text messages, Mr. Grasso?
Well, now that you've done said something. He says, "If, no longer binding, then why the bill?" Isn't a part of the bill that said that it's no binding, that it's not binding, then why the bill?
They're not legally binding, but they're instructive still.
Where does the bill state?
Does it say that?
It doesn't say that, Mr. Grasso.
Okay. Well, he's listening now. Okay, very good. If anyone else wants to ask a question, Mr. Grasso's number is 443. Just kidding.
Man, this phone is on fire over here, believe me.
Please dial that number and ask your question.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You still have one more question.
So, just so we're clear, because there was a lot of discussion or explanation before the amendment, and now we're in the amendment, the amendment is clarifying that futures, so the general development plan that's upcoming, that you're working on now, will not include small area plans.
No.
No.
It includes the old small area plans.
That's correct.
No. The general development plan that is adopted after this bill is effective shall include small area plans.
Right. But the plans will be built after the general development plan passes.
Correct.
So there will not be, just so we're clear, because that was my line of questioning with Ms. Leahy, was that we will not be between now and the time the general development plan passing that you're working on now. There will not be small area plans done, and the old small area plans will not be incorporated to the GDP.
The last part's not true.
Okay.
The last part is what Mr. Hager said, that--
The old ones will be dusted off and try to retake pieces of them that potentially could still apply.
Correct.
So they'll use the old ones, but they won't develop new ones. And then the general development plan will pass, and as part of that general development plan, it will mandate--
Future.
--future small area plans be developed for the next GDP beyond, eight years after that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think I recall this from the work session, but you guys, I think, testified that it would be impossible or impractical to do small area plans in the timeline before the next GDP is adopted.
Correct.
Okay. So--
The council asked us to begin the GDP process as soon as possible. We're required by law to do it within 10 years.
Understood.
And we're at that point.
Right. And then, and then after that, it's every six or--
Eight years.
Eight years, okay. And so I just had a question, if this amendment didn't pass, this is just really a clarification, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Because one could argue that the way the bill is drafted now, it just means that any GDP has small area plans. We're trying to say that the upcoming one will have small area plans, and all futures will have small area plans.
And in the meantime, the upcoming one, you still have the ability to review the old ones as guidance documents.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
As I've stated in previous, either work sessions or meeting, it is my intent to sit down with someone from planning and zoning. It is, I'm certainly going to, at least with two of the communities, with Jessup and Lythicum, definitely want to sit down and do some sort of small area plan in my own accord, and I'm going to incorporate that as we deliberate the general development plan. So I'm putting it out there again, so you're aware of it. So when we start requesting information, we will do a small area plan for--
Jessup.
And we will do one for, at least the elements of it, for Lythicum. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Neigh.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Neigh.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. Bill number 2118, as amended, will be heard on May 7, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2318.
Bill number 2318, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, community meetings, notice.
Thank you. This is an administration bill with many sponsors. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, and the county executive's office with me at the table, Phil Hager from Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. Bill 2318 increases the distance provisions associated with community meeting notices from 175 feet to 300 feet. This ensures that the interested parties will have adequate notice and increase transparency in the development process. I would like to thank Mr. Pruski, Mr. Smith, Mr. Trumbauer, Mr. Walker, and Chairman Peruca for co-sponsoring this bill. We'd be happy to answer any questions, council.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If not, we will open the public hearing. Ms. Leahy?
Signed up.
Signed up. Good evening.
Good evening again. I promise this is my last time up here. Amy Leahy, and speaking on behalf of the Greater Severn Park Council, and we are asking you to support Bill 2318. This bill would require notification by a developer to all lot owners within 300 feet of the property, subject to the application to be mailed at least 21 days before a community meeting, an increase of 125 feet from the existing 175. Interestingly, upon checking with the county's Traffic Engineering Office today, the county's legal requirement for notification of a new streetlight installation is only, is 200 feet, which is 25 feet more than the existing requirement for notification of development within 175 feet of a home. So GSPC believes that the current 175-feet buffer is not enough, given the impact a new development would have on the neighboring communities. Increasing that distance would be beneficial for the existing lot owners. So we ask for you to support that bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 634, Annapolis, Maryland. Once again, I, back, you know, on the same tack, 175 feet has never been adequate in Herald Harbor and in, and the other communities. Closer to where I live, there is a property, there is a community association that I will not name specifically, but it's basically about 300 feet long, but it's perpendicular to a main road that is, you know, within, within a peninsula. You know, whatever they do on that 300, in that 300-foot-long community, you know, impacts the traffic burdens and everything else, you know, the waterfront. It changes the nature and the character of the community, and people have a right to be concerned. There was at least one thing that happened where a road that was publicly dedicated, you know, was abandoned and given to somebody else who promptly built a home on it, which then blocked, you know, the access to the water, which a lot of people were fired up about, when three or four years later, they found out what had transpired. Everything was all done. The cake was baked, it was done. There was no way to reverse that. The existing notice does not meet constitutional muster. Or as the man, you know, from Rolling Knoll said, you know, "A thousand feet." Or, "All the people in the community who would reasonably be impacted by the alteration, you know, the traffic burden on the road." Because when you impact the traffic burden on the road, it's not that you do that to the people, your neighbors, one day. It's when you do that, and it's every day for the rest of your lives. So if they only take another, you know, minute because you had to add in another traffic light, you know, you do that 365 days a year for 20 years, you have really messed up your neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you very much. We will now close the public hearing on Bill 2318. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2318.
Bill number 2318, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, community meetings, notice.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 2318.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill number 2318 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2418.
Bill number 2418, an ordinance concerning zoning, conditional uses, licensed dispensaries growers and processors of medical cannabis, special exception uses, licensed dispensaries of medical cannabis.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, and the county executive's office with me at the table, Phil Hager from Planning and Zoning, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. Again, Bill 2418 does not allow variances for the cannabis grower, processor, or dispenser provisions of the county code. Our goal is to preserve the integrity of the council's will with the legislation that we all worked very closely on to ensure that the legislative intent of this compromise is protected. We worked for months on this and came up with compromised legislation that we believe should continue to be followed. The use provisions incorporate conditions such as a separation distance and other related safeguards. These are typically adopted to, as a body, as part of a balancing act, which we think was the case with this legislation as well. And again, this bill will prevent those safeguards from being ignored. Couple other items just to add, since the work session, you've read in the papers, the county executive has announced they'll put together a task force to look at the existing code. We've heard the complaints, as you all have, regarding the restrictiveness of the code, and we plan to put that group together to look at those who have gone through the process and to see others who have been impacted by this law as well. And secondly, I emailed around the link to the interactive map to the council today to answer the questions Mr. Trumbauer had as far as the existing areas that could locate for these facilities. As you saw on that map, we believe there'll be six dispensaries up and operating. I haven't been able to confirm in District 21 where the second one is, but we believe it's in Prince George's County. The first one is applied for variance in Laurel, so that will not be located in the county, meaning that there will be three other potential dispensaries to locate under the current law in District 31 and one more in District 32, as these are all set up by state legislative districts. So we'd be happy to answer any questions the council has. And in closing, I'd just like to thank all the councilmen for co-sponsoring the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick. Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Oh, no. Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, can you say a little bit more about the task force, what its charge will be, and maybe how long you expect it to be in existence? Like, when you would expect the task force to give recommendations, I guess?
Yeah, I think the dates have not been set yet. I mean, it's the short answer. We're trying to pull together a group now. Hopefully, we'll have council involvement with this to try to really see, I think it's been roughly two years since the law's been enacted, and see what lessons have been learned from those who have gone through the process and been successful, those who have been unsuccessful, and to try to learn what changes need to be made to the law, if any, based on their input. So, I welcome suggestions from the council as to whom should be included in that group, but we're going to try to pull that together as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Mr. Walker.
The, I guess, the question comes to mind, well, first of all, I'm assuming that this, I mean, I'm assuming you're aware of the, the amendment that was on a bill in the General Assembly related specifically to our
Right.
What they argued was effective prohibition of these locations. That amendment was withdrawn, like, at the last minute, or voted off the bill, or something, sliced from the bill. Am I, is am I to assume that this task force was some sort of negotiation, like, we're going to set this up and do these reviews in exchange for removing that provision from the bill?
No, not at all. We didn't have any involvement with, I mean, we worked with Mako on the amendments that were offered by the committee, but there was no quid pro quo for that.
Okay, so, so if we're, if we are, I guess, I guess I'm trying to understand the purpose of passing this now, if there's a task force that's getting ready to be started, to look at all of the rules. I mean, we're, we're clamping down, basically, on the rules that exist, or removing any flexibility in them before we're setting up a task force to study whether the rules are sufficient or insufficient.
Right, I think, I think the issue is, the law should be the law on this. I think the question is whether the law needs to be tweaked in any way is something that we're going to look at. If you all have suggestions for that, we're very willing to listen to it. But this is strictly with the variances provision of this, that it can't be varied.
The, the map I got this afternoon, thank you for sending that, at the work session, we were told, like, two to three weeks before we go get that, so I was, I didn't get a chance to really dig into it. I actually can't pull it up on my laptop, I'm not sure why. It opens, but it won't let me, like, drill down into it or see the layers. I can see it on my iPad and my phone, but I can't. So, all I can see is the red lines, which I'm assuming there's only three things on there, the red lines indicating the division of the Senate districts, correct?
Correct.
And then the, the orange circles, which seem to be, or are orange or brown, or I don't know what color they are, seem to be the one-mile radius around the current locations that are either, that are approved or in process of some
Correct.
At some level or another. And then the purple designation means that it is on an art, a parcel, it is on an arterial road?
Correct. It's the parcels that are available for the dispensaries.
So the only ones that are available are the purple parcels that are
Correct.
Outlined on the map?
Along with the existing ones that have locations on them, but you can't be within a mile of
Correct. So that's, so the purple ones are the universe of parcels that are available
Correct.
For potential, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll open up the public hearing then on Bill Number 2418.
I know, I don't know what's wrong with my
We have a number of people signed up. Mr. Richard Smith, Mr. John Pika, Mark Zablotny, Kevin Melanson, Stephen Bradford, and the Honorable Rhonda Pendell Charles. Would you come forward then? Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your patience in spending the evening with us. Mr. Smith, Kevin Smith. Oh, Mr. Richard Smith. When did you change your name? Mr. Richard Smith, please go ahead, sir.
My name is Richard Smith. I live at 12 North Southwood in the Homewood area, just by the library. I'm the CTO and co-founder of a company called Open Path Products, which is one of the world's first mobile application development companies. We've been recognized by companies like Samsung, and AT&amp;T, and Qualcomm, and we've also been recognized by the Maryland Department of Commerce, the Anarundel Economic Corporation, and even a local food bank where we volunteer. Our company's always been based in Anarundel County, and we've been at 2065 General's Highway, which is the gateway to parole since 2011. And we purchased this property so that it could provide a safe and beautiful environment to our engineering staff, and also act as a showcase to our clients. Most of our approximately 35 engineers at Open Path are all Anarundel residents. So as a resident, and a property owner, and a business owner, I'm very concerned about the recent trends of granting so many variances to the dispensary zoning laws. The zoning laws are there for a good reason, and the variance process, I feel, has been abused. I'm not opposed to cannabis as a legitimate medication prescribed by ethical doctors, but it would be bad for a community and for businesses, including Open Path, to have our county stuffed with dispensaries on top of each other, next to schools, homes, and in disruptive places. The zoning laws are here for a reason and should be honored. I know that the cannabis industry has been claiming hardship due to a lack of locations, but I found that in less than 10 minutes of Googling, I was able to find two locations that seem to be valid just near the BWI area. As an entrepreneur, my experience has been that there are almost always options to meet a goal. They just sometimes require more money and compromise than the stakeholders are willing to make, which becomes a business challenge, but not a zoning problem. I'm therefore strongly in favor of 2418, which is clearly necessary to protect the existing zoning laws, and I thank you for your time and for your county leadership.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Appreciate it. Mr. Pika.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, John Pika.
Mr. Pika.
I took your advice and read the Anarundel County lobbying law, and I'm a registered lobbyist in the state of Maryland. Now, I do not want my compensation to be construed to apply to this process, so unless I'm requested specifically to testify about my experience with the difficulty finding a location, I'm going to have to decline to testify.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Zablotny.
Yes, sir. Mark Zablotny, 1050 Carriage Hill Parkway, Annapolis. I'm representing General's Highway Council of Civic Associations tonight. I'm one of the, one of the eight members of the Steering Committee. We represent 37 communities in General's Highway corridor with approximately 4,100 households. I polled the residents about this issue and literally got hundreds of emails back. I brought a bunch of them here, but the big thing is the, the residents all opted for resounding support for Bill 2418. Not one email stated opposition to medical marijuana. On a personal note, I myself am a cancer survivor. I got Agent Artist contamination when I was a soldier in Vietnam, and I know what the pain and suffering that many people deal with. The problem is the variances allow bad locations. A perfect example of this problem is the Kine Therapeutics variance application for 21, 2061 General's Highway, behind Matt Weller's farm outlet and the bowling alley. There is no good access to this location. It is too near the horrendously busy intersection of General's Highway and Best Gate Road. The traffic is awful now. This will just add more misery. It has little or no room for parking. I'm from Lythaca originally, and my friends up there are telling me that the lines at the new dispensary are just huge, just before the opening. There's no place to go. Also, we wonder why this location is even being considered when the West Street dispensary is maybe, or maybe not, one mile away. I was told by County Executive Steve Schuh that there would be a total of five dispensaries in all of Anarundel County. Why should we have two dispensaries so close to each other? What about the rest of the county? On behalf of the 4,100 households in the General's Highway corridor, urge you to vote yes on Bill 2418. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Melanson.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kevin Melanson, and I reside at 51 Regatta Bay, Apartment 446, in Annapolis, Maryland. I'm a software developer who has been working at Open Path Products for about eight years. I am strongly in favor of Bill 2418 because I've seen firsthand how the variance process can be abused. In January, I took time off from work with, along with about 20 of my coworkers, to attend a variance hearing for a dispensary that seeks to move in directly next to our office. The dispensary brought two sophisticated lawyers and multiple experts, who asserted that the 1,000-foot residence variance should be waived because of General Highway acts as a buffer, and nearby residents could not cross the street. In fact, I walk to work every day, and I cross General's Highway at least two times a day. I don't understand how they could request a variance saying that the buffer isn't relevant because the street is uncrossable. Additionally, their lawyers also argue that the dispensary could not be seen from nearby residences, but in fact, you can see it quite clearly when you, when you walk down General's Highway. Seven variances were granted to the location in General's Highway, and I am walking proof that the arguments for them were questionable.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Bradford.
Stephen Bradford, again, 528 Corbin Parkway, Annapolis, Maryland. I'd like to thank the council members, their team, and the efforts to date, and the opportunity to revisit this issue. I support proposed Bill 2418 and the strict adherence to the COMO 1062 dot zero one dot zero one, and any future references or adjustments as they relate to licensed dispensaries, medical cannabis, and associated businesses within the county. My support of this bill is not an objection to cannabis. I agree and believe that it does have a purpose as a holistic and alternative to conventional pharmaceutical medicine today. My concern is rather focused on the special exceptions, concessions to these variances, and the zoning modifications that take place as shown by the propensity of this current and previous administration to favor business development over the special interest, and special interest over the residential quality of life, the environmental preservation, and the impact on existing businesses within our community. Those taking here today, Open Path, as we all may or may not know, Matt Weller, who will no longer be part of our community as of the end of May. He elected to go month to month. The property was sold. He will no longer be the icon in our community as we pass through that corridor. That property will be another discussion in the future. These developments really do benefit few, but impact so many. I seek transparency with the task force, for example, and responsible planning for these and other adventure, other industries going on in our community, both commercial and residential, because these, these undertakings certainly will impact our community. And there's my reference to our distance, and I'd like to retract the previous reference to a football and add to it the orb of a golf ball, which will exceed the 300 yards. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Smith, you testified earlier on. Have you been to one of the existing facility, or the one that's opened up in 32 at all? I was just curious.
Great question. Virtually, I would say. I haven't had a chance to drive by them, but I've certainly read a lot of the comments from people that would visit them just through the Google feedback and the like, and I've certainly had some anecdotal views around it, but I haven't had a chance to go up there myself.
And are there, based on the map that we have, I, I'm not familiar with where, you referenced a business that's close to, is that close to one of the other dispensaries that's already open? I mean, like, how far away are you from one of the other?
Yes, we are actually right next to Matthew Weller's farm, so just in that area when you're driving in, by the bowling alley. In fact, I prepared some presentations about us, as well as some nice pictures, in case of
That'd be great, to give it to staff, and then
It is, it's within the one mile, it's less than one mile from the, from the site and on, in parole.
Yes.
It's less than a mile from the other side?
You, you can see it on the map.
Okay. And, and have you been in touch with any of those other dispensary owners at all, or?
I've not.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Alderwoman, it's an honor to have you here, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Good evening to everyone. Rhonda Pendell Charles, Annapolis City Council, Ward 3. I'm here for general testimony personally, as a part of being a parole community, and also the Greater Parole Community Association. This will be Exhibit A for each one of you, including Mr. Schuh. I've incorporated in there several documents, including a legal brief that I prepared for Mr. Holman when he was the administrative hearing officer, which indicated that preliminary conclusions, it is well established that the county zoning has a right to establish the 1,000-feet, feet lot line prohibition in the case of locating medical cannabis dispensaries in the county. However, U.S. Supreme Court cases have long established, the state has the power to regulate the environment in the vicinity of schools and churches by the exercise of reasonable zoning laws. It is starkly obvious that the lot line prohibitions are based upon distance and not jurisdictional boundaries. Nowhere in case law are there lot line prohibitions based upon jurisdictional boundaries. If lot line prohibitions were based upon jurisdictional boundaries, then it would run totally contrary to long-established U.S. Supreme Court case law. I heard Mr. Marzick indicate separation of distances, the one at 2029 West Street, in Ward, abutting Ward 3 within the city of Annapolis. The 1,000-foot lot line prohibition from the proposed medical cannabis dispensary yields the following. It is close to 11 residential streets, a total of 52 dwellings, approximately 2,046 residences, according to the latest census. And Anarundel County Public Schools, the Monarch Academies, which is already open to have at least 600 to 800 elementary school children, grades kindergarten through fifth, ages five to 11, this school being located only 666 feet from the proposed dispensary. This is appalling. In our last op-ed in the Capitol, we indicated 10 reasons why this medical marijuana dispensary should not be located there.
You were referencing the article. Please finish that thought.
Number one, according to marijuana is still illegal under federal law, the president's of cannabis sends a wrong message to our youth, the local clergy's opposition, future approval by a mental, General Assembly that this could possibly be recreational, Upper West Street sector study, and the dangerousness of the West Street, the potential for increased traffic, the potential increase in criminal activity, the location providing unwelcome easy access to residents, and thereby lowering property values resulting in decreases in city-county coffers. And one other point I want to make on the 11th one, we want to reiterate the extremely serious and very troubling legal allegations lodged by members of our Latino community against an individual directly involved in the opening of this dispensary. We do find it extremely incredulous that the opening of the marijuana dispensary at this location, a location bounded by an historically African-American community and the second-largest Latino population in the city, such a dispensary would now directly affect at least two-thirds of our Ward 3 community, who arguably have either been outwardly opposed to this dispensary and/or have allegedly been discriminated against directly by an individual involved in the opening of this. Some would argue how much more disrespect for the rational wishes of a community can be heaped upon two minority groups that comprise two-thirds of that community, and all these types of decisions unprecedented. We argue that, and we still continue to oppose the marijuana dispensary at 2029 West Street. There was a legislation, a change in the legislation after this particular variance was passed, and we do find that
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Is anybody else that would like to?
Ma'am.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed.
Ma'am.
That's all that would, I had signed up. Yes, Mr. Smith.
I just want to thank you for allowing the Alderwoman to sort of push those comments out, because she represents thousands of folks in her community, and so I know we are under strict rules, but I am grateful that you, you gave her that extra time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Over 5,000 residents.
For the record, I asked her a question, and that
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's a compliment.
I know. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I appreciate it. Good evening, Mr. Plot.
Yes, good evening. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Council, David Plot. I'm an attorney, law firm of Wynnos and Blocker, and I am speaking, and I'm a registered lobbyist on behalf of Open Path tonight. And we are in support of this legislation, and I have a handout for you, kind of my comments, but I, I think if, if you look at this and you listen to the testimony you've heard so far, it gives the rationale for why you want to prohibit variances in this situation. I almost find myself asking, how can I testify to that? Because as a land use practitioner, I often am arguing variance cases, but this is a very unusual use. How many uses in the zoning code are actually a felony under federal law? And irrespective of how you feel about marijuana and the health benefits, and there's a lot of controversy about that, I think the bottom line is that this council wants to control the process. There was a negotiated compromise as to where these facilities could locate, after a lot of debate. And perhaps, you know, the study, this, this commission that's going to evaluate those standards, like Mr. Walker said, you know, maybe the standards are too tight, and the purple areas are too small. That should maybe be tweaked some. However, I don't think you want to give the administrative hearing office for, for the county the authority to make those decisions. I think this council should be the one to make those decisions and set the standards as to what should be complied with. So by prohibiting the variances to those standards, essentially, then, you will be controlling the process. And in the case of Open Path, there were seven variances to the residential setback requirements. This is a facility that is approximately one mile away from the facility that's under construction right now on West Street. The setbacks from the residential, you know, the residential-y zone properties, residential uses, the setbacks from other dispensaries, those are standards that you should be setting and not allowing numerous variances to occur to those standards, which has been, what has been occurring in the county. So we support the approval and wish that you would adopt the legislation as introduced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plot. Appreciate it very much. Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 634, Annapolis, Maryland.
Ms. Johnson, VO 5634, Annapolis, Maryland. Fundamentally, I'm here to echo the, you know, the testimony you've already heard. In my capacity in the Crownsville Small Area Planning Committee, people were really interested in trying to protect General's Highway, and that particular corner, you know, where Matt Weller has been, has, you know, we felt that, you know, we knew, we researched, we found out, there was a lot of research, a lot of support for Matthew Weller and the contributions he makes to the community. But obviously, you've already heard the fears and concerns about the excessive traffic and the congestion that already exists. And then to support Alderwoman Rhonda Pendell-Charles, I don't know if any of you have ever walked West Street, or have ever tried to cross from the McDonald's sign to the Sherwin-Williams Paint Place, but you take your life in your hands, there've already been a multitude of accidents there. And then what I would like to do is refer, oh, I do want to support Mr. Plot, because when you go to these variance hearings, it seems there is one variance after the next, after the next, we change the zoning, we change this, we change that, and we basically alter the fundamental rules and fair play. But I want to go back to the time when we had the discussion about would we have medical marijuana? And Pat Lynch testified about the importance that there is the potential for removing the intoxicating materials from the cannabis, that is, isolating it so that the product that you're selling to people is the product that relieves the problem. And I can't rem, I just, I read an article two weeks ago, and I can't remember the name. Anyway, I support everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Sumner, I appreciate it very much. Thank you, folks. That will conclude the, the public hearing on bill number 2418. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 2418.
Bill number 2418, an ordinance concerning zoning, conditional uses, licensed dispensary growers and processors of medical cannabis, special exception uses, licensed dispensaries of medical cannabis.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, could we have the panel come back up? I do have a couple more questions.
Sure.
If they wouldn't mind. Thank you, Mr. Chair. While you guys are getting settled, I'll go ahead. So, just to clarify, my understanding of this bill and the reason that I was comfortable co-sponsoring it is because this will preclude variances, but only those variances related to the bill that we passed a couple of years ago, that are specifically, well, number one, the zoning requirements, but number two, the requirements in 1811, 133. And, and they're listed in the bill, there's six of them, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, for instance, if, if there was a facility that met all of these requirements, but they had some setback or lot line issue, that would still be possible for them to pursue a variance. And so, just for the point of getting it all on the record, the six provisions in the bill that variances would be precluded for, essentially the 1,000-foot requirement from residential property, schools, and other property owned by the Board of Ed, have to be vehicular access from an arterial road or higher, there shall be no lording signs, it can't be located within one mile of any other premises of a licensed dispensary, and the premises may not have displays of medical cannabis visible, and then they may not have an on-site physician. So those are the six requirements that this bill would essentially shut down. Correct?
Prevent a variance.
Prevent a variance.
Would prevent a variance from getting this. And the map that you guys sent around, the purple areas presume, I mean, they would be valid whether we pass this or not. The purple areas that are open to receiving a dispensary.
Correct. They meet all the requirements.
Right. Yes, okay. One other just thing to get on the record, the, a lot of folks testified today about the proposed dispensary at the corner of Best Gate and General's Highway. That received seven variances, and I believe they were all in relation to the 1,000-foot from residential property. So that's seven separate variances from presumably seven different residential properties. But that, that's my understanding of what those variances are, just for the information of my colleagues.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpdower. Mr. Smith, are you, no? Mr. Walker.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The way I see this, and again, we just got this this afternoon, so I'm, I'm still trying to, to look at it. Mr. Marzick, you indicated earlier, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was three, three licenses that are going to potentially be located in District 31? Is that what I heard you say?
No, two.
Only two? Okay.
Two per senatorial district.
No, I'm aware of the state law, but I thought you were referencing one of the ones that was allowed by Grower or something.
No, I think the third that was applied for in an app, in District 30, so you have Edgewater, West Street, and then the General's Highway. I believe that third one was connected to the Grower, that's why there's...
It would have happened to be.
That's why there's three in a sense, or one of those three is, I believe, one of them has to be.
So, the map has already excluded properties that are within the boundary of the schools as well?
Correct.
The way this is drawn? Okay. So it looks to me that, like, in 31 as an example, there's really only two spots in that district.
Two large parcels, yes.
Two, one being like some kind of Army Depot thing or something like that, is what it says on my Google Maps. U.S. Army Depot, I don't know what that means. I'm not familiar with that district, but...
That's the property Grasso wanted to turn into a park.
Was it?
Exactly.
Okay. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chair, but I, I would like to ask that we hold the bill, if possible, to the next meeting. And I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second it if, if the maker of the motion can explain what he wants the extra time for.
Well, I just, I just got the map this afternoon, and I really haven't had a chance to look at it. It looks to me that there's quite a few, I mean, there's very limited spaces, and I just, I kind of just want to be able to study it a little bit closer before I make a decision on the bill.
Is the map part of the legislation, or is it just informative?
No, just informative.
I'll, I'll second the motion. Thank you, Mr. Trumpdower.
Any discussion on the motion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpdower.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, the motion to hold the vote on bill number 2418 is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, that bill will be held until May 7. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 2518.
Bill number 2518, an ordinance concerning zoning wineries.
It's time for wine, right? Mr. Pruski, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As discussed at the last work session, this is just a fix after we had the distillery bill in allowing zoning for wineries for W2 and W3, simple as that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski, Mr. Marzick.
We're supportive of the bill, Mr. Chairman.
Any, any discussion? Then we'll open the public hearing. There was no sign up, does anybody want to testify on this matter? Please come down. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing on 2518. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill 2518.
Bill number 2518, an ordinance concerning zoning wineries.
Is there any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill 2518.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumpdower.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill 2518 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill, excuse me, of Resolution 918.
Resolution number 918, resolution confirming the appointment of a member of the classified service to serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundale County.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick and the county executive's office, Resolution 918 appoints Eric Kornmeyer to the Pension Oversight Commission. He'll serve a four-year term commencing February 1st, 2018, and expiring January 31st, 2022. You should have his resume in front of you.
Thank you, any discussion? We'll open the public hearing on Resolution 918. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing on Resolution 918. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 918.
Resolution number 918, resolution confirming the appointment of a member of the classified service to serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anarundale County.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 918.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me.